Ready? Are we live? Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. Good afternoon, council. I apologize for the delay. I know that you'll be very surprised to hear that we had technical difficulties. So hopefully, everything will go as planned. We were having a problem hearing Mr. Fry. We started about seven minutes after two, and I want to note that all the council members are here present, either present, in the town meeting room, and Mr. Fry is present by Zoom, and you should be able to hear him. Mr. Gravier, our town manager, is here. Will Wharton, our IT person. Janet Connery, our director of finance, and John Apple, our assistant town manager. So to begin with, let me just ask you to please join us with the Pledge of Allegiance. Okay, thank you for your patience. As you may know, that we are now permitted to meet together in public, and we've taken some precautions. We're all seated six feet apart. There are very few of us in the room. There are about 10 of us in the room seated six feet apart, and so council members are free to wear their face coverings or not. If you want to just take them off when you speak, that's fine, too. Whatever works for you. Today is another experiment, as you saw from the beginning, and so we'll be going. I'm going to ask Mr. Gravier to please explain how things will proceed today with the, how you can access chat and everything else. So, Mr. Gravier?
Mayor, council. So if you are viewing this meeting at the moment, you are probably viewing it on our normal Internet platform that you access via the town's website. If you want to continue to view it and you do not want to ask a question or comment, then you have to make no changes, and you can continue to do so. For those who are viewing this meeting electronically today and would like to comment or have questions regarding an agenda item, however, you may do so by viewing the meeting from a Zoom link provided on the town's website at townofbethanybeach.com. If you have no comment or questions, again, you may just continue to view the meeting on this Internet platform, the one you are watching it on now. Again, for those who have questions or comments, please visit the town's website, townofbethanybeach.com. At the bottom of the page, click on the link for the town council meeting with today's date and time. From there, you will be given directions on how to access this meeting live via Zoom and how to comment on the meeting using Zoom's chat feature. Questions and comments will be read prior to discussion of each new and old business item listed on the agenda. Mayor?
Thank you, Mr. Gravier. Does anyone have any questions? Okay. I'm going to proceed with the first item is approval of the agenda. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second? Before we go any further, I just wanted to ask that we delete item C under new business, which is a discussion, consideration, and possible vote on appointments to the Board of Adjustment. It's a, we normally put these items, like appointments to committees, on every October meeting, and this is, was added because it's a routine item, but we made the appointment last month, and there are no new appointments this month. So with that, I'm going to, without objection, I'm going to ask if you would approve the agenda as amended.
So moved. Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Fry. The next item on the agenda, we have a new item on the agenda, you might notice, this month, and it's a consent agenda. As you know, with COVID, we were not able to do, to keep up with the minutes and to do them as we used to do them, every, the meeting minutes, every meeting. We consider the meeting minutes from the meeting before. So what we've done is we've gathered them all together. Today is our catch-up meeting, as we begin our new year of business. And so what we do with the, rather than have a separate motion and second for each particular meeting minutes, we are putting them together as a consent agenda. And what that means is that these are routine matters. They're something that probably in the past has never really involved discussion and probably won't now. So we're going to add that to a consent agenda, and if we approve the consent agenda, what it will mean is that we are approving each of those items on the consent agenda on the one, with the one motion. We've also added the financial reports for the months of June, July, and August, and these are fairly routine. Mr. Morris today will be giving us an update on the September financial reports, and that will basically bring us up to date, between that and the consideration of the budget, will bring us up to date to where we are now. The council has an opportunity to review all of these minutes and all of these, the three financial reports, and have had an opportunity to check, to bring any corrections forth, and so far, none have been, have been done. So the first thing I'm going to ask is if there are any items on the consent agenda that any council would like moved, any council member would like move to the regular agenda. Hearing that, I'll call for a motion to accept the consent agenda, which consists of these 17 minutes and three financial reports. Do I have a motion?
Second.
Okay, moved and second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, Mr. Fry. Moving right along to announcements and reports, do any council members have any announcements? Okay. I just wanted to make a few comments then before we begin, just to kind of put this in perspective. Each fall, whether you think about it, when you think about it, each fall, the council begins a new year, and this is not unlike we did in school. So it's just basically a continuation every September. In September, we have our election, and we have our reorganization meeting, and in October, we have the appointment of committee members. So I always find that it's a good time to pause and reflect on the past year and to think about what priorities we want to establish for the coming year and how we might reach those goals. And one of the lessons I've learned in the past few months is that the people of our community will come together and help one another in case of an emergency, and we saw that with the COVID-19 pandemic, which we're still in. I think it's inspiring and something we can all be proud of. And I think also, under the leadership of then-Mayor Kilmer, this council faced some very tough decisions, and we made them for the, to protect the health and the safety of the people in Bethany and our visitors. So I think there were a number, we did a number of things that we hadn't done before, and I think that those things, we've received some feedback both from businesses and from homeowners and property owners. Some of them, they liked, some of them, they had suggestions for how to improve. But rather than have those go to waste, what I'd like to do in the future, in the next meeting maybe, or workshop, is to take a look at what we did and to solicit input from our businesses, from our residents, from our property owners, about what they liked, what they didn't like, what they saw about Bethany as a result, and what they'd like to continue. So that, I just wanted to put that out there as a discussion item for a future date. And looking to the significant issues we face today, the pandemic is still with us, and the council's responsibility is to continue to protect the public health and safety. We have to do this in accordance with the governor's orders and sound medical advice. But being the resilient human beings that we are, I think you can see on today's agenda that we're not solely obsessed with COVID-19. We're moving ahead with town business. We're moving ahead with some of the items that people have expressed concern about over the years, our property owners and residents, and things that have taken up the town's attention for quite some time. And while additional issues will come to the fore during this next year, the issues we've identified definitely warrant priority consideration. So as we consider those and other issues, we'll continue to encourage and welcome citizen input. We're all neighbors, and we want what's best for our community, and we want everyone to participate to the extent they can in a constructive way. Working together, we can preserve and enhance the quality of life in our town. So with that, I would just like to move forward, and the first thing we have on the agenda here, under announcements and reports, would be the approval of the financial report for September, and I'd ask Mr. Morris to please do that.
Thank you, Mayor. This report covers the budget through September 30th, 2020. We are 50% through our fiscal year 2021. On the operating revenue side, we've collected 67.8% of the budgeted revenue compared to 81 point percent, 81, 80.1% at this time last year. On the expense side, we've expended 49.5% of our budgeted amount compared to 56.7% expended in the same period last year. Recognizing that this report is subject to audit, I respectfully move that the council accept and approve this unaudited report.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, Mr. Fry. The next item on the, thank you, Mr. Morris. The next item on the agenda is a report from the town manager, Mr. Gravier.
Mayor, council. It's been a while since we've done this. We've had some other meetings, and we've done a lot of discussion, had a lot of discussion about COVID and the things that we did to deal with COVID, but it's been a while since we've done a manager's report with some of the smaller details that we generally cover in them. But we'll start with a big one for this report, and that's replenishment. We've been fortunate in this year to be the recipient of a replenishment, a maintenance replenishment, that was scheduled for the, for the fall or winter of 2020. And unlike our last replenishment that was scheduled for the fall and didn't occur until the summer, this one will begin, it seems, looks like, at this point in time, will begin about November 1st. No, excuse me, it will begin November 1st in South Bethany. Will take approximately 30 days. There is only one barge operating, and then move to Bethany Beach around the end of November into December, and will probably be in Bethany almost to the new year. And that is with ideal conditions. If conditions are less than ideal, we'll be pushing into January and possibly February. Again, it's dependent on equipment, and it's dependent on the barge. And if you remember our last replenishments, it's not unusual for a barge to go down. When that occurred, replenishment could still go on because there were multiple barges in our last large project, but again, there is only one barge working in this project. To put the project into scope, last replenishment, which was a major replenishment, we received 659,000 square yards of sand for Bethany Beach alone, and this replenishment brings 732,000 square yards of sand to both Bethany and South Bethany. It's a project that was initially designed only to elevate and widen the beach, but because of a little dune damage we suffered in the last couple of nor'easters that we have had here recently, there will, some of that sand will be moved to repair dune. The project only really begins at Ocean View Parkway and ends at Wellington Parkway and tapers back to the north and south from both of those locations, and is designed by the Corps, again, to help us protect the dune and the properties, structures behind the dune. It's not an enhancement to the beach, it's for the protection of property in Bethany Beach. So that's good news. It's due to begin, it's on schedule at this point in time. Over the years, we've talked about some of the things that we have to do in the Loop Canal to try to maintain the Loop Canal and maintain the banks of the canal on the property that we own and control. It's become more of an issue, most specifically in the spit of land that abuts Lake Bethany, because over time, we have lost trees on the bank, on the north side of that bank, and as we have lost them, they have fallen into the loop. We've had them removed, and as that has occurred, erosion on that spit of land has occurred at an increasing rate. We've reached the point in time that we need to work to salvage that and repair that as best we can, and John has been working with engineers, the US Army Corps in Denrick, and we're reaching the point in time where we'll be able to offer a viable project that the council will have to consider constructing in our next budget cycle that will place a riprap barrier on the south side of the spit and wooden bulkhead on the north side of the Loop Canal. And that would be a bulkhead that's approximately 700 feet, John? 900, 900 feet of wooden bulkhead in that area. And I will be bringing that probably to the council for consideration. It is an infrastructure repair that needs to be accomplished. The estimate at this point in time for the work is about $500,000, and we would want to probably, again, ask the council to consider that as a capital expenditure in our next year's budget. Collins in Kent, Collins Street has been an ongoing consideration of the council, some sort of enhancement of the pedestrian pathway there. We have gone back to the drawing board three times for a design for Collins because the designs we kept on picking up and the bids we were receiving for a variety of circumstances were much higher than we had originally anticipated. So we went back to our engineer one more time, November, October, November, and asked them to redesign the walkway, do it with a minimal intrusion into the existing walkway, and also to take care of whatever sort of drainage issues that they found that creating the pathway might, might develop, and take care of them in a way, again, with a minimal cost. As COVID came into play, our engineers weren't available, and at the same time, we had asked our engineers to take a look at a redesign on Collins, we had also had a discussion with DelDOT about Kent Avenue. And it was in the same time period where the engineers were doing preliminary work on their final design, what I hope is their final design for Collins. Our engineers met with staff on Kent and looked at Kent Avenue with the hope that we could create a pedestrian walkway on Kent at Wellington Parkway at the north end of the driveway of the library. Work has been done there. Our engineers working with DelDOT have created a plan that we believe DelDOT will approve, and that construction will be part of our Collins project. So the ultimate plan will be to have a walkway on Collins that takes you to Kent, a walkway on Kent that takes you to the north side of the driveway at the library, which is the southern side of Wellington Parkway, where we will create a piano, set of piano keys and a crosswalk with an electric warning light for people to safely cross Kent Avenue. And if you remember, in our meeting, in our public hearing regarding Collins, one of the criticisms, and it was a valid criticism, was that we were encouraging people to use Collins, but when we got them to Collins, there was no safe conveyance to get them to Wellington and across Route 1. Well, now, this will take them down Wellington in the 300 block, where we would also hope to create a pedestrian pathway similar to what's in the 200 block of Wellington, take them across at the flashing light, the new flashing light, pedestrian light at Wellington, and across the highway and to Atlantic Avenue. So that is something that, again, we probably will bring to the council to consider in this next budget cycle, but again, looking at where we are and where we might be here in the future, the council will have to consider if it wants to move forward with that project, given the project now that we're, that we probably will have to do on the Loop Canal. The lights on Route 1, the, have been installed, they've been up for a while, they're complete. Our Public Works Director, in talking to some people working at DelDOT and doing some assessments in the median, determined that the very south end of our grass median that's near the pep-up gas station, you see the town sign, the welcome sign, and then there's, that's our last light. And then there's an area of a couple of hundred feet where there are no lights, and then the intersection with the light at Jefferson. We found out that DelDOT was going to install three aluminum highway lights there, so we would end our black lights in the same median, they would install three of the aluminum lights, and we went back to, to DelDOT, had the same discussion we had when we, we had this work done on all of Route 1, and we will be contracting with DelDOT to put in decorative lights, three additional lights at the very south end of that median strip. The cost there is approximately $9,000, a little over $3,000 a light. You'll be glad to know that work on the museum has, has never stopped. Of course, Carol Olmstead has been relentless in pursuing that, and she is making sure that the contractor is, is kept, kept on target and on task, and Carol well expects the museum to be completed here as we approach spring, and hopefully, we'll be able to open it and have people in and attend and view it here and, with a change in what happens with COVID in the future. Our Blackwater complex is finally ready for us to move into. Furniture needs to be arranged. We need to pull up some, purchase some monitors, place them on desks for at the point in time we may ever evacuate, for us to hook our, our units to, CPUs to. Phones will need to be purchased, but everything else is in place. Again, it's ready to go, heated, HVA-seeded, enclosed, and just finishing items. We may add a fence to the property to make it a little bit more secure for the items that we store outside, but that should be the only large expenditure that we're contemplating moving into the future. The park is complete. The only thing that's not been completed with the park is the final sign-off and punch list. We have a number of things that we're going over with the contractor and the designer, not the least of which is an assessment of all the plants in the park, what might need to be replaced, what doesn't look hardy, and what other changes he would, might want to make there. That is the only holdup at this point in time for us with the, with the park and a punch list to sign off. There has been discussion, and we've noted it ourselves, and we have mentioned it in prior managers' reports before, pre-COVID, as a matter of fact, about the sign in the park, and some people have raised the concern that it was possible that we might be able to do something that was a little bit more attractive. I think staff agreed before we've heard the first, first comment about it. We'll have a couple of designs to the council here in the next month or two. We'll keep the large structure up. It would be counterproductive and excessively expensive to remove it, but we'll change some of the design and something that might be a little bit more attractive. We'll bring it to council, we'll put it on the website, and we'll see what people think of it, or if the council might just want to leave it as it is, but we'll give you all some options here in the near future. We are hoping, within the next 30 to 60 days, to put up our own YouTube channel, and we'll do that as a way to more effectively and easily communicate with our citizens. Everyone is accessing YouTube this, these days. It's very, very simple, and for those people that would want to go in, possibly pull up catalogued past council meetings, look at little news features that we might do, one of the things I think we'll first do and put up on YouTube will be a short informational video about replenishment that explains replenishment and what's going to happen, and from there, and hopefully from today, we'll begin to add our meetings, and then we'll also explore the option, the possibility, and we'll, we'll punish Brandon and make him look at this for us, of being able to, to video live YouTube meetings at the same time we're putting it on the Granicus platform. So that's something we'll consider for the future. One of the things we did during COVID was create 15-minute parking spaces in town, and through a little glitch here with the right hand not knowing what the left hand was doing, we removed those signs for about a week or two. We have replaced them, and we intend to leave those 15-minute signs up through the winter. We have heard repeatedly from our eateries downtown that they have been a real blessing and made a real difference. You would think, this late in the fall, that they wouldn't be needed, but we've had more than one complaint over the last couple of nice weekends that they're needed and much appreciated. Looking at the holiday events that we normally have this year, I'm afraid that we are going to have to cancel just about everything. I can't think of what we might be able to do in today's world with COVID and distancing requirements, our parties, the Santa, Santa visits, the hayrides, any of it, the, the tree lighting, the coral events at, at the bandstand. I just don't know how we do that. We will have a tree up, we will be decorated, we'll have the lights on, but absent some sort of a significant change that I don't think any of us can foresee, and I will be canceling our, our holiday events moving forward. We have been in contact a lot here over the last couple of months with MediaCom. MediaCom's franchise agreement with the town expires in November, and in the next few weeks, we will have a public hearing. A public hearing is mandated by the FCC whenever you renew a franchise agreement, and in that public hearing, we will invite public comment about MediaCom. MediaCom, we've had a dialogue back and forth. MediaCom has given us a list of some substantive things that they have accomplished here over the last month or two that we have asked them to look at, and they have done, not the least of which is a serious review of their seasonal rates, and they will be publishing a new list of seasonal rates that take into consideration that many of their users are seasonal users. They've done some, a serious inventory of some of their infrastructure and have actually done repairs to at least 70 different locations, excuse me, in town. And this will be, I think the mayor would probably wanted to do this, schedule this year again in the next 15 to 21 days. Our MediaCom contract for anyone that is not informed is an older contract, and it is only a contract or a franchise agreement for cable television. It's nothing to do, nothing in the franchise agreement has anything to do or any reference to Internet or Wi-Fi service. It is an agreement that we're bound to be involved with, with MediaCom because of FCC regulations, and it is also an agreement that allows any other competitor, any other marketer, be it Verizon or Comcast or anyone else, to compete against MediaCom. So it's not a contract, it's a non-compete contract. Anyone can compete. To date, no one has chosen to bring a competitive service into Bethany Beach other than Comcast running fiber optic to our downtown commercial area in Down 26. We hope that's a harbinger of Comcast bringing residential service to us, and we continue to work with them to see that happen. To date, we are COVID-free with our employees. At one point in time, we had four or five police officers down with COVID, 18 lifeguards testing positive. No one, thankfully, became seriously ill. Of the 18 guards that were tested positive, only two were symptomatic. And again, we are, are happy to report that no positive test and no illness in the building and with staff at this point in time. We have brought almost the entire staff back to work five days a week with one or two exceptions, and those people will continue to telecommute into the future, and I know we, we read about spikes expected and this and that to happen, and we will adjust what we do as those things occur. And Mayor, that's what I, all I have.
Thank you very much, Mr. Gravier. Before we see if there's any public comment to this point, does anybody on council have any questions or comments for Mr. Gravier?
I had one about the franchise agreement with MediaCom. It is typical to just have a cable franchise agreement with other providers, too. They don't, in other words, it's not just MediaCom that doesn't provide for the Internet as part of the franchise agreement?
Well, to be, to be frank, I'm not sure. I believe that the, the franchise agreement with MediaCom that we entered into 24, 25 years ago was solely cable because that was all that was offered.
Was offered, okay.
And I believe that any other agreement would probably list what was being delivered, be it Internet, Wi-Fi, and/or cable television services.
Okay. And I also wanted to say that when we do have a public hearing, we will be providing for people to be able to send in written comments as well. You don't have to just, you know, be able to maneuver a chat feature on Zoom.
We would go out on our listserv, the larger listserv, not just the one we deliver to people that want agendas, and make that inquiry and try to queue them up before any sort of a meeting. And we would do that with some, a sheet that explains, a flyer that explains what's being considered and what the situation is. I think many people, and we're constantly asked by citizens, why do we continue to renew? We have to explain what it is, why it is, and we can't just not renew and have a change. There's no one out there offering the change just yet. So we'll make an informational flyer, and we'll solicit questions, yes.
Okay, good. That'll be helpful. Now, I don't know how you want to hear, are there any comments or questions to date?
No.
None? Okay. Just checking. All right. Thank you very much, Mr. Gravier.
Mayor?
It's a very thorough, comprehensive report. The next item on the agenda is discussion, consideration, and possible, oh, this is for you.
Yes, it is.
I'm sorry.
You say there's no old business.
No. Go ahead. Sorry.
Under new business, the first one, discussion, consideration, and possible vote on committee guidelines and standing committees. Mayor Hartman.
Thank you very much. Every year, as part of our October meeting, we go over, we review the Bethany Beach Committee Guidelines and look and see if there are any changes or additions or deletions that we want to make with them. Basically, it outlines Basically, it outlines, the committee guidelines outline the purpose of the committees, the differentiates between the mandated committees, ones that are mandated by law, the standing committees, terms of the committees, the membership, and then it goes through things, the conduct of the people who are members of the committee. And following that is a description of the purpose of each of the committees and their scope of work. So I think everybody has had an opportunity to review this, and with that, I would make a motion that we accept the Bethany Beach Committee Guidelines as written. Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any further discussion regarding?
Thank you. Yes. Mr. Vice Mayor, I would like to amend this agenda item to defer the discussion, consideration, and possible vote on committee guidelines and standing committees until our November meeting. Specifically, I have three changes to the guidelines that I would like to propose. Number one, allow non-citizen members of committees to be full voting members by striking the first sentence of item H on page two. Number two, and don't worry about taking notes because you'll see later what I intend to do or what I would propose to do, but number two, modify the second sentence of item J on page three to specify that all committee members should be accommodated as much as possible and not just, quote, "non-resident citizens." And number three, clarify the months that committee chairpersons and members are approved. The current guidelines specify the approvals occur at our October and November meetings, and that is not what is actually happening. I would like to write up these proposed changes with explanations and have them distributed to the council before our November meeting so the council has adequate time to consider them before they are discussed and voted upon. So I would like to amend and defer the item on the agenda under new business, item A, until our November meeting.
Do we have a, is, is that in the form of a motion?
Yes, that's in form of motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion be before we vote? All right. All in favor of postponing this until?
Oh, she is.
Oh, I'm sorry, you, yes.
I'm excited.
Are you voting? Are, are you have a?
I'm voting.
Oh, all right. So all in favor for moving this further discussion and possible changes to the committee guidelines to November? Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. The next item on the agenda is the discussion, consideration, and possible vote on committee appointments.
Mr. Kilmer, every year we appoint members of the committees, the various committees or our standing committees, and I'd like to go through and name the people who are appointed to each committee. For the Audit Committee, the chair is Chuck Peterson, appointees are Stephen Mitchellson and Richard Slaven, Slav, Slavkin, sorry.
Slaven, Slaven, I mean, Slaven.
Slaven.
Slaven?
Slaven.
Thank you. Budget and Finance Committee, the chair is Jerry Morris, appointees are Denise Boswell, Martin Decree, Jerry Dorfman, Joe Healy, Fulton Lapato, and Phil Rossi. Charter and Ordinance Review Committee, chair is Rosemary Hardeman, appointees Mike Boswell, Carol Brigleb, Mickey Hinman, Norman Knopf, Michael Loftus, Anne McKenney, Patrick Shepley, Tempe Steen, and Susan Frederick is a, a non-voting member, is the building inspector. Cultural and Historical Affairs, chair is Carol Olmstead, appointees Carol Kaliff, Pam Doreo, Christina Edgar, Jan Kinsella, Theo Lapato, Mary Lou McNerney, Claire Simmers, Mary Lou Urquhart, and Julie Maluski, Maluski of staff is a non-voting member. The Fourth of July Parade Committee, the chair is Bruce Frye, appointees are Chris Ommula, Doug Mowry, Jennifer Carter, Jerry Morris, John Salini, Marcia Rednor, Maureen Kilmer, Patrick Shepley, Ray Ommula, and again, Julie Maluski is the staff non-voting member. Non-Residential Design Review Committee, chair is Luke Kilmer, appointees Mike Boswell, Susan Frederick, John Hendrickson, and James Weisgerber. And then Planning and Zoning, this is just an update, Faith Denault is the council liaison, and Luke Kilmer is the alternate council liaison. And I'd like to move approval of these committee appointments. Mr. Kilmer?
In the form of a motion? That was in form of a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All?
Yes, Mayor, I'd like to make an amendment to allow ten members and three members of the town council for the July parade. I do this every year because it is complex and we need those people.
I'll second.
We have a second?
Second.
Okay.
Should we do this in two, two separate items here?
You do the amendment.
Can we combine them together?
Yeah, combine them.
All right. So we have a, a motion with an amendment and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion and, and then the votes passed.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda?
That was, yeah, that was the one that we deleted.
I know. I'm going to go to the next one after that. Discussion regarding the impact of COVID-19 on the 2021, oh, I'm sorry, this is yours.
That's all right. You can, I won't repeat it, Mr. Morris.
Sorry, sorry.
Who's on first?
Obviously, I'm not.
Am I up?
Yes.
Okay. COVID-19 pandemic and our response to it has had a significant influence or financial impact on our town, as everybody can imagine. It's expected to be the first year in decades that the general fund revenue does not reach the budgeted amount. However, the effect of these revenues, revenue shortfalls is being mitigated substantially by operating cost savings this year. As I stated earlier, we are halfway through the fiscal year 2021 and have a projection for the remainder of this year. This projection and discussion are only on the town's, the town's general fund since the sanitation and water funds were only slightly affected financially by the pandemic. The general fund revenues are expected to end the fiscal year $508,000 under budget. Parking revenue, revenues are projected to be under budget by $691,000 from many changes made to the parking regulations, including delay parking enforcement until June 1st and limiting the number of parking spaces available to non-residents. Rental taxes are projected to be under budget by $259,000. Most of this revenue is not received until November, so this projection relies heavily on information we receive from several rental agencies. While there were many cancellations this spring, most cancellation, excuse me, rentals were quickly rebooked once the short-term rental ban was lifted on June 1st. Residential rental taxes projected at ninety percent of prior years while hotel rental tax projection is seventy-five percent of prior years. Investment income is projected to be under budget by $78,000 as interest rates paid by our certificate of deposit are only a fraction of what they've been in the past. Helping to counter much of this shortfall is transfer taxes, which are projected to exceed our budget by $514,000. Revenue for the first six months was, this year was up eleven percent higher than the average of the past three years. General fund and operating expenses are projected at the end of the fiscal year to be $781,000 over budget, much more than, oh, excuse me, under budget, much more than the roughly $300,000 that we normally expect under budget. That's, that's a big indifference, over and under, excuse me. Reasons for the savings include cancellation of bandstand performances, the parade, the fireworks display, and hiring and delaying hiring summer employees and not running trolleys this season. The state, the state of Delaware received federal funding through the Corne, the Fund, the Virus Fund Relief and Economic Security Act, which is called CARES. The state intends to reimburse the towns for one hundred percent of the allowable costs as the town should reincure most of the funds we spent directly on the pandemic, which is currently $171,000. As projected, operating savings are more than expected, more than the expected revenue shortfall, and the financial effects on the pandemic are awash, assuming the state and federal funding reimburse the town for direct cost. So basically, the town is financially in very good condition. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Morris. Are there any questions for Mr. Morris? So the bottom line is that we should end up without a loss.
That's correct.
Yeah. Thank you.
Understanding that a lot of the projections are because of, you know, rental taxes haven't come in yet.
Sorry. Understanding that we haven't received our rental taxes yet, and these, those numbers will be coming in shortly in November. So, yeah, we will end up over budget.
Okay. Thank you.
Rosemary.
Oh, excuse me.
Yeah, the one thing I found interesting was I would have thought that we would have had quite a downturn in our water revenue receipts, and yet they are comparable to the prior year, right the same. And it was, it's pretty amazing with all that we went through that that number, I would have figured it would be $200,000 less, and it's right on target. So I, I'm just amazed at how well that went.
We're seeing more usage right now over the last two months, September and October. We're seeing about fifteen percent more usage than we saw last year.
Yeah, yeah.
And I think more people are here and fewer people have returned to, to their year-round homes.
It seems that that, it just shows up, so we've been fortunate there.
Yeah, I, I think a lot has to do with the, there are children not going back to school.
Yes.
So they can actually telecommute from wherever they are, so. And I think, I, I know in, in our community, we saw a large number of people staying there for, for quite a bit of time.
We just did the analysis, and I was surprised it was only fifteen percent, so.
Well, I think though that congratulations on acting quickly on the expenditure side, the operating cost side of these changes, and because of the revenue decreases that we knew were there, and that really has balanced that off. So even, we've done very well.
Those were things we had to do, and, and the consequence was, yeah, the savings, yes.
But they were addressed beforehand. It wasn't later. It was done on the front end, and that was just pretty terrific and puts us in a, really, all things considered, a nice position after a very trying period.
Especially when you, especially when you compare the, the news you get from other surrounding communities.
Yes.
Who are in a lot worse shape than we are. And again, hats off to the town for, for being very responsive.
As, you know, as I went through with Janet with these numbers, it was amazing when you look at all the things that have changed, that we should come out on the positive side, which is a very good reflection on the town and the town manager and everybody that works for the town.
Yeah.
Thank you. Anybody else? Anything from the public?
Nothing I want to tell anybody about.
Okay.
No, Mayor, we have no comments.
No comments.
The only thing you see here is, I think John's doing the same thing I'm doing, we know we have some people in the building that are viewing to make sure that the platform is working, so I keep on writing test, test, and they write test back, so no one from the public has written yet.
Okay, because I keep seeing those thing goes up there and I'm.
That's Bruce.
That's the test? That, that, that right there? Okay. Thank you. I don't want to miss anybody.
There are the comments, there are the comments, Mayor, just in case you want to know.
Okay.
Okay.
All right. Next item on the agenda is discussion, consideration, and possible vote on approval of the fiscal year 2021 budget and the schedule of fees. Mr. Morris?
Thank you, Mayor. The Budget and Finance Committee held public hearings in January and February, which seems like a hundred years ago, to prepare for the, the proposed budget for the fiscal year The version of the budget being voted on today has been available for the public, for the public on the town's website as well as in the town hall since early March. This budget was originally scheduled to be voted on on, on March 20th. However, this meeting was canceled when the town council stopped meeting in person, and of course, we're meeting in person for the first time, due to the COVID-19. Since April, the town has operated under the understanding that the budget would be approved as it was originally proposed in March, once in person the town council was meeting, which we are today. The proposed budget goes as follows. The budget includes $10,661,000 in revenue, $9,039,000 in operating costs, $1.1262,000 in capital projects, and $246,000 in debt repayments. There are no changes to taxes or fees in this proposed budget. I make a motion that council approve this budget and the schedule of fees for 2021, recognizing that at, as we always do, at the end of the year, we will go back and revisit the budget and adjust accordingly.
Thank you, Mr. Morris. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Any discussion?
Yes.
Mr. Healy?
Mr. Morris, I, I would, Mr. Treasurer, I would like to say, I'd like to have a workshop just to review our three funds, the general fund and two enterprise funds, that's the water and sanitation fund, and review the status of the reserve, of these reserve funds, and then focus also on our five and 10-year plan to see where we should go with the financial side of things in the future. So we, if we're, we've done very, very, very well at this point, and actually, when it came time to deal with this budget, I thought for sure that we would have to amend it, and I would not, I would not amend it. I think we're better off going with it, and it, again, I think it's a compliment that we've done as well as, to the town that, and the management thereof, that we've, we've done this well. And so I would love to see us just continue with this, but I would like to see a review of the, the long-term planning aspect of it.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Mr. Frye? No? Okay. Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the 2021 budget and the schedule of fees. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
And I would just like to add for the record something that Mr. Healy has just said, and people have commented on, and that is the great work to put us, keep us in this position that we're in that should be attributed to the town manager, to our finance director, and our treasurer, and everybody. So thank you very much.
Next item on the agenda?
Yes.
Mayor? Next item, discussion, consideration, and possible vote to establish a stormwater entitled, title flooding committee, a telecommunications committee, and a pedestrian and bicycle safety committee. Mayor Hardeman?
Thank you, Mr. Kilmer. At the present time, much of the ongoing work of the town council is done by boards, committees, and a commission. And there are three of them, independent bodies that are mandated by state statute, and those would be the Planning and Zoning Commission, the Board of Adjustment, and the Board of Assessment. And the six committees whose members we named today are appointed, are appointed, they address specific issues and activities, the ongoing activities of the town and issues. These boards, committees, and commissions form, perform a valuable service for our town government and its citizens. In addition, the council has an important responsibility in establishing the town's goals and priorities based on the circumstances and citizen concerns, such as dealing with COVID-19 crisis and longer-term issues. But since some of these significant long-term issues require ongoing attention as well as educating and securing support from other government. as educating and securing support from other government entities and organizations, they cannot be fully accomplished in a year, and we've seen this with a lot of our long-term projects, some of them which are now coming to fruition. However, each year voters have an opportunity to evaluate council performance and progress in advancing these goals and priorities. In the past year, we've seen some of the fruits of much of the commitment and effort of the council and the town manager, most recently in the addition of the new pedestrian and median lights on Route 1, in the scheduled beach replenishment, and in the recent bladder dam study to help alleviate flooding. As the work to accomplish our long-term priorities becomes more complex and time-consuming, I'd like to propose for council consideration the formation of three ad hoc committees, each headed by an individual council member, to be responsible for three of those priority areas. And I think this will allow us to divide up the work of the council into manageable segments, with each committee providing reports and recommendations to the full council. The three ad hoc committees I have in mind are a stormwater and tidal flooding committee, which would be chaired by Mr. Frye, a telecommunications committee, which would be chaired by Mr. Shepley, and a pedestrian and bicycle safety committee, which would be chaired by Mrs. And I would, I would, a couple of things, I guess I would move the council approve the formation of these three named committees and direct the Chair of each committee to report to the council at our next meeting with a statement of purpose as well as possible members for each, for council consideration and vote. And I would also say here that if anyone out there has an interest or an expertise in any of these areas and would like to be considered as a member of these committees, to please send an email to admin@townofbethanybeach.com, and also to please include a statement as to why you would like to be considered and any expertise you might have in that particular area. These committees, I think, will probably be small, so everyone might not get an opportunity to serve. However, this would be good, too, because at least anyone who is interested in serving on a committee and has not made that known so far will be, will step up and be considered, at least if not for this, then for something in the future. So, that's my motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Further discussion before we vote?
Mayor, would it be possible to post your, your call for volunteers on our town's website? I'm sure the thousands of people that are tuning in today have heard that, but we might get a few more people interested on, from what.
That's a good idea.
The other item I would like, some form of a white paper, look outlining the, the areas of responsibility and investigation for each of these committees. I'd like to have a broader idea about what they're, they're going to do, and I think that's important early on, before we go too far.
Right.
In this, we're having the chairs, you know, basically start putting something, something together.
And that, that's part of the motion, too, that they come back to the next meeting with a purpose that we would approve.
It would be your mission statement, as, as we asked for, yes.
Yeah, more than a purpose, I think more of an outline of, of what they're trying to, what are the issues, what are they trying to accomplish, and how they're going to do it.
Okay. And I would add that as part of the.
Yes.
Okay.
Because I would just hate to create these committees that are just kind of just moving around and not really.
I understand.
Focusing on, on what that, each of these commissions would be working on.
Right.
Like all the other committees, we have a mission statement.
Right.
All right, and outline the purpose.
That's a good idea, thank you.
So, we, we've had a motion and a second, all in favor with the other requests made, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
The motion passes. The next item on the, and this is the last item on the, on the today's agenda, is discussion, consideration, and possible vote to approve a white paper from the Charter and Ordnance Review Committee regarding review and possible revisions to Chapter 26, Section 26-4, voter eligibility of the town to establish a permanent registration list for non-property owner residents. Mayor Hartman?
Thank you. You know, at the present time, residents who, who do not own property in Bethany Beach and people who own prop, whose name is not on the title, so if your, if your own property is an LLC, or if the property is in the, for whatever reason, is in the name of one or another spouse, and the other spouse is not on it, they have to register to vote each year. And there have been a number of people, I meant to take care of this earlier in previous years, but it's always slipped my mind, but every year I'm approached by people right close to election time who say that they can't vote because they forgot to register. And when you think about it, if you, if you registered a vote in the state elections, you don't have to go each time, each year, and reregister, there is a record. And I, I think that this, I would like to look into, have Cork look into establishing the same thing here in Bethany. I did check some local towns and cities, and the city of Rehoboth Beach has a permanent registry, voter registry record for residents. And if they abide by the rules, which is, I think they can't miss more than two consecutive elections, not vote in two consecutive elections if there is an election held that year, and if they don't do that, they have to go through a process that's not really reregistering, but kind of acknowledging that they're still here. And then taking a look at our, theirs is by, in their charter, but when I look at our charter, it seems that our charter would allow us to do this without having to make a charter change, it would allow us to do it by ordinance. And the, the portion of the charter that I'd be relying on is Section 5-4, 5, 4, 3, which says that the town council shall enact such ordinances concerning the registration of qualified voters for municipal elections in the town as it deems reasonably necessary to provide for the orderly and efficient conduct of municipal elections, provided that no such ordinances shall alter qualifications of voters as herein set forth, nor shall any such ordinances unduly impair the right to vote in a municipal election. And so, I think in my opinion, this, an ordinance would be consistent with the language and the spirit of the charter, to not unduly impair the right to vote, and as a part of our due diligence, we would check this out with our town solicitor to be sure that we didn't have to have a charter change. So, with that in mind, I would like to move that the town council approve Cork's review and draft of a revision to the, to Chapter 26, Section 26-4, voter eligibility of the town code to establish a permanent registration list for non-property owner residents.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
As I understand it, this is just for the development of this, it's not where, you're going to come up with a proposal that we would actually vote on.
Exactly, yeah. Yeah, the process that, by which Cork works is that if we want to consider something, we bring it as, forward as a white paper to the town council to see if this is something the town council would like to pursue.
Okay.
And then we will bring it back in the form of a, a draft ordinance that would require two readings.
So, someone who was a resident, and I would assume that they're, they're not an owner, but they were a renter, and they rented for a year, you're going to have a term in there, how long they would have to rent in order to qualify to be?
Well, according to the state law, it's 30 days.
That's already in there.
That's already in there?
It's, it's 30 days.
Only 30 days?
Yeah, well, the state law was changed, I believe it was in 2017, from six months to 30 days. And also, there, when you go through town, I mean, there were a lot of people who, older people who live with their children, and they've lived with them for years, or children who live with their parents and they can't vote, or people who are permanent residents, but their home is held as an LLC, and so they, they can't vote unless they register.
So, with a grandparent or someone who lived with a child, once, they would still have to register at least once?
Right.
Right.
Right. But I, there was one woman who's been here for 20 years, and she keeps forgetting to register each year, so.
Well, that's, that's on her, though.
Well, it is, I know. But I'd, I'd forget to register, too.
You know, once it's on me, twice it's on you.
Well, we know that, you, Rosemary.
I know, I know.
The other thing we have to also be very cognizant about the maximum number of people in an LLC who can vote.
Right.
We can't violate that.
Yeah, I think it's eight people.
Yeah, but, but my point is, once you reach that number, I don't care how many people are on there, you, you can't exceed that, so they might not be able to vote.
Right.
Because I think that's also important, to how many, maximum people for one property to be able to vote.
Well, for one property, but then if you're a resident, that might be a separate issue. I could, I could.
Yeah, I know, but, but a lot of them on the LLCs are not residents.
Right, exactly, yeah.
Yeah, but I'm saying, but it doesn't matter whether you're a resident or a non-resident. In this case, if you're a resident, that's not an issue, but, but you can't have more than X number of people.
Exactly.
For property be able to vote.
Actually, if you're, if you own your property as an LLC and you don't live here full-time, there's no provision in our charter for you to vote.
Yes.
Mm-hmm.
All right, so that's all the, so a motion was made and second, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes.
Okay. There's nothing else on the agenda? Anybody else have anything?
Put the chat screen up.
Oh, chat feature.
And again.
Nothing. Okay. Thank you very much for thinking of that, Mr. Grabiay. Since there's no further business and there are no questions or comments on the chat feature from the public, I would ask for a motion to adjourn.
So, a second?
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Motion passes.